Good evening. This is a regular city council meeting. It is six o'clock and it's Tuesday, November 2nd, 2021. Welcome those of you who are here with us tonight, both in person and online. We do have an 11 o'clock rule if necessary. Hopefully that won't be the case. I will call the meeting to order at this time. And please join us in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Could have the roll call, please.
(inaudible)
Present.
Dave Frank?
Present.
Barbara Bynum?
Present.
David Reed?
Present.
Anthony Russo?
Present.
Gunnison Clamp?
Present.
All city councilors and our youth council representative are present.
Thank you. Any changes to the agenda?
No, Mr. Mayor, there are not.
Alright. The next item on our list is the call for public comment for non-agenda items. Uh, this is a time where you can go up and comment on other items of business. And you'll have three minutes to do that. Personal tax or disagreements, personnel or employment matters, or the use of profanity or ethnic race or gender oriented slurs are prohibited. And it is, and any disorderly conduct which violates state or federal law and local law. Also, we have about three minutes to speak. Do we have anybody that would care to come forward? Yes, sir. Please come forward and state your name and address for us.
Matt Goldisich, oops, Matt Goldisich, 9401 Black Canyon. Got an easy one for you again. Um, I'm here to ask the council to make some changes to regarding the zoning hearing notices. This table describes them and the, and my recommendations for these changes. Now, three of these methods are already in the city code. First one is sending letters. That's to property owners within 100 feet of the zone boundaries. I think that's way too close. I'd like to see that expanded to property owners within 500 feet. If there's an HOA in the area, that should be 1,000 feet. You notify the HOA board and they, and then they in turn notify their own members. And then clarify within the code what that mailing schedule should be. Now, this is a Grand Junction practice. That's not something I invented. Next one is site signage. And now they're placed about 15 days before the hearing. They're on the property. I looked at a few of these. The maximum lettering on that's about 3/4 of an inch. Can't read them. We need a large and colorful sign that draws attention. Readable from the street, at least two inches high. So you can see them. Cause I've sat back and I've looked and I said, and I've looked up on the internet. That's about the right height. One side per street frontage. Montrose County is intending to change their signage based on these recommendations. We also have public notice in the newspaper. But it's usually in the classified legal section that a lot of people don't even read. Let's change that to a display ad in the main section. Pertinent basic information. Address or parcel number versus legal description. Clarify again within the code that ad schedule. This is also a Grand Junction practice. Not something I invented. There's a couple of other methods used that aren't in the code. One of them is the city website. The notify me alert, I think is very good. But there's only about 300 people signed up for it. I think a lot of them signed up because of. Uh, we ought to periodically advise the availability of this as many new residents. And some, and some residents just aren't internet savvy, so these other methods are obviously, you know, obviously needed. There's also a notice board at City Hall. Continue that, I guess. Few residents regularly visit the hall to, so that the value of that bulletin board is probably minimal for the general populace. And again, define the notice board posting schedule. Hopefully you'll find these changes of value and implement them. Thanks for listening.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would care to speak? If you would, please state your name and address.
My name is Stan Grig. I live at 3756 Grand Mesa Drive in Montrose. I'm here to talk about the neighborhood pre-meetings for zoning. You have a handout there. Citizen concern regarding proposed zoning and rezoning and subsequent development is a concern understandably. They are legitimately concerned about an increase in traffic, compatibility with neighbor, with us, the development with surrounding neighborhoods, possibility of reduced property values, um, effects on local schools, et cetera. Some residents will contact the planning department and/or city council with their concerns or other objections. Many times they will wait for hearings to express their concern. If these same citizens had the opportunity to understand the proposed development and get their questions answered by the applicant or the developer before the hearings, this could lead to a neighborhood collaboration with the developer and a better development hearing outcomes. Below are recommendations that many believe will temper the most concerns surrounding the development process in Montrose. Basically, it's, it's early discussions with zoning applicant or developer, including the latter's commitment to honor their presented plans, uh, which we recommend be codified. The chart below states that it is not a current practice in the development process in Montrose. And the chart includes our recommendations for such discussions between residents and the zoning applicant or developer. To go to the recommendations, it is our recommendations that such meetings be mandatory and scheduled before zoning application is submitted. We recommend that such meetings are, uh, proposed, uh, meetings of, that are proposed are residential developments greater than 25 dwellings and for all commercial developments. It is recommended that a 14 day notice be given to all neighbors without, within 1,000 feet of the development. I'd recommend that these meetings be held not more than 60 days prior to the zoning application supplemental. And lastly, it is recommended that city staffs schedule these meetings, give notice and maintain meeting minutes and materials used. Zoning districts use by right are broad, so neighboring residents must understand the specifics and the intended use within use by right. The applicant should be prepared to convey the accurate information regarding development plans, so neighbors can judge their impact and prepare their comments. Thank you.
I don't see anyone else. Do we have anyone online? See no indication of that. Next item on our agenda is item six. City council consideration of minutes of October 18th, 2021 special meeting. Are there any questions or changes anyone has? If not, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the minutes of the October 18th, 2021 special city council meeting and the October 19th, 2021 regular city council meeting as presented.
I have a motion to second. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Item seven, ordinance on the first reading of 2567. Shani Wittenberg, would you care to explain this one to us?
Good evening. So before you tonight is ordinance 2567. It is the first reading of the appropriating ordinance for the 2022 expenditures. And I have a presentation that you all have seen at the public open house. I'd be happy to go through it again at your pleasure, or if you'd like me to do a higher level, that, whatever you prefer.
Is, is the budget open house that we held and you went through the presentation, is that available on the city's website for people to watch?
It will be, yes.
Okay. So maybe instead of doing it again, we, we make, make sure that's available and folks who want to hear that way, instead of, that information is, is there and easy for people to find.
Okay.
I, I don't know. I mean.
That's just one idea.
Or can do it again.
We can do kind of a high level instead of, um, doing each one of those slides. We can talk about the fact that it's 85.7 million dollars. You know, 68 million is actually operating in capital and the other is transfers between funds.
I really feel that we went at a adequate level of depth in our other sessions and that if people can find and reference that session, we're for the budget open house. I don't feel personally the need for us to go dig deep back into it tonight. Any comments, Joe?
I think at least a high level, it makes a lot of sense just to make sure, cause it is, it is on the agenda and it was noticed. So if someone's listening in or if someone does listen in later on, at least it's there for referencing.
Alright.
Sure. And it might make the presentation online a little bit easier for those that are referencing it later, I guess.
Could you pull the mic up a little closer?
Sorry, of course. Can you hear me better now? Okay. Um, so to start out, I'd like to thank you all, city staff and supervisors. It's really a group effort that we comprised this 2022 budget compile it. Um, it's not just done in a vacuum. It's done throughout the year. We don't do this in a week's time or a month's time. It happens, um, in a very, um, methodical way throughout the year. For instance, we had the big picture, big picture meeting, um, back in May of this year, where we all discussed, you all kind of gave us direction on what you were seeing or what the constituents were looking for in the community. I think housing is one of those, um, major funding, um, opportunities that we have. And then in August, after the supervisors and department heads went through their line item budgets, we then met again as a city staff, city manager's office, the finance office, and then each one of those different departments and went through each one of their line item budgets. It takes us about 40 hours to do that. So that was the week of August 9th. And then we met back with you guys in September and went through what we had balanced, what we had put together for 2022 in a day-long meeting. Um, didn't go through every single line item, but we hit the highlights of several of the funds, talked through a lot of issues that, um, are in the budget. Uh, the public open house was held on October 19th in this room from five to six. And we had a few attendees to that. I'm not sure they were there for the open house, but they enjoyed the presentation nonetheless. And then by charter, a proposed budget was submitted to you all by October 15th. And then this is the first reading of the appropriating ordinance and the second reading has to happen before the end of November, um, per the charter. So, uh, oh, you know, I could share my screen. I'm sorry. I don't know why I'm out of practice with this. That might help. So this is the full presentation. Um, that's what we just reviewed. Overall, these are all the funds of the city. So this includes the water, the sewer, the trash, um, every single fund that the city budgets for. Um, and you see their total expenditures in that budget 2022 column of 85.7 million. That does include 17.5 million of transfers between funds. So we transfer money from the general fund to the public safety fund. We also transfer money from the general fund to the capital improvement fund. Um, we transfer to the debt service fund to cover the debt. Um, and then the public safety fund also has debt and they're transferring to the, um, debt service fund as well. That's kind of how governmental funds work. It's not just one, one set of books. It's, you know, we've got them split out between the general fund, special revenue funds, capital improvement funds. Uh, the graph on that page actually just shows the operating and capital. It does not show the transfers. So that would be why, um, it's only 68 million versus the 85 million on that graph. So just clarification on that. The general fund is budgeted at 28.2 million dollars. And of that, um, there is, there are several capital projects budgeted in the general fund this year. Um, the biggest one being the irrigation in Buckley and Lyons Park. We're going to upgrade that irrigation in 2022. It's a $750,000 ask. And part of it's going to come out of the lottery funds or the conservation trust fund with the state of Colorado. Just a graph here to show you that the public safety fund is receiving 43% of the general fund operating expenditures, um, which is a requirement of the ordinance that implemented the 0.58% sales and use tax for public safety. General fund revenue, uh, just to emphasize that we operate on sales and use tax. Uh, we do not collect property tax in the city of Montrose. Taxable retail sales is our highest, our largest revenue. And next year we are budgeting 600, we are budgeting, sorry. Um, the taxable retail sales on this chart is 610 million, which equates to about 18 million in taxes collected. Building permits is another large, um, revenue. And this is just to show you the growth in the community. This also contributes to our sales and use tax. When you have all those new residents, um, a lot of times they're shopping here in Montrose and that then, um, produces revenue for the city. Public safety fund is budgeted at 15.3 million. Public safety fund includes a lot of the 2A, um, which is how we refer to the public safety sales and use tax. Eight vehicles for patrol is budgeted as well as a vehicle for animal control. Some software to help with the operations. An armored rescue vehicle. This is actually a replacement, but the first one we received was a, um, donation. So this is budgeting for the replacing of that. Side-by-side vehicles for the bike paths in the parks to help with, um, police activity there. And then, um, the drone kit for the drug task force that'll help enforce, um, or help to find where, um, we need to focus our efforts. And then the, um, certificate of participation portion of the public safety building is 6.9 million. This is the report card. I'm not going to go through it and it's probably pretty small for you all to see as well, um, but it will be part of the online, so people can blow it up if they need to. Public safety revenue, like we talked about, 43% is coming from the general fund as a transfer. That combined with the public safety sales tax, 0.58% totals their revenue of approximately 12.1 million. There are some other revenues in there from grants and, and other, um, charges, but the majority of their revenues is coming from the general fund and the safety sales tax. Uh, the office of business and tourism, um, is comprised of two different funds. The tourism promotional fund, which is hotel excise tax at 0.9% and restaurant excise tax at 0.8%. The retail sales enhancement money, this is a little bit more confusing just because it's part of the vendor's fee that retailers give up for us to help promote sales in Montrose. So anybody who's collecting sales tax in Montrose gets to keep 1.33% of that money. And they, the rest of it comes to the city. We do a calculation and that's the, the revenue for RSE.
There a typo there on the 0.9 and 0.8%?
Maybe.
It's not, it's not 0.08 and 0.09, right? It's 0.8 and 0.9?
Correct. I got carried away. Um, so retail sales tax does have one, um, capital project we're considering. It's the pocket park redo, um, there between the buildings on Main Street, San Juan Construction and, um, I can't remember the businesses in that other building, but it's, um, a park that we were using a couple of years ago for some outdoor concerts and that type of thing. So that is in the budget. Um, we have five other special revenue funds. Uh, special revenue funds by definition are needs, are, are used, the revenue is used for specifics purpose. Um, opportunity loan fund of $60,000. That's for businesses to apply to the city. We will give them, um, some funding. The public education government fund, that's money that we're receiving through the cable bills. And we've got about $40,000 budgeted for that. Just found out today, we have an actual quote for what it would cost to redo this, build this room for, um, AV. And that's quite a bit higher. So we might come to you next year with a supplemental budget and that's to make sure this room is, is the sound and all of that is sufficient for meetings like this. There's the conservation trust fund for 400,000. That's the, the second half of the, um, irrigation in Lyons and Buckley Park. The Montrose Urban Renewal Authority, that's money we're going to spend on horizontal improvements, um, out in the URA area. Special benefit fund, this is to mainly benefit the animals in our, um, the donations we get for animals. So we use this for special surgeries, some of the spay neuter clinics, those types of things. Capital improvement funds. This is where we're doing a lot of our street improvement and, uh, we've built up a little bit. And so next year we're going to spend 3.2 million on the move mo.co, which is, um, improving our streets, bringing our infrastructure up closer to standard. Um, I think that's just a drop in the bucket, but, um, it's all we have for now. There are several other projects there that you can read for yourself. Um, one of the, that last one, West Main Road Design, that's actually a grant we received from CDOT. And we usually don't budget for grants, but this one we had awarded prior to, um, September. So we went ahead and put it in the budget. So part of that, 80% of that will come back, um, as a grant. Sorry. Our match is 20%. And then the enterprise funds, um, at $19 million. Enterprise funds at the city include the water fund, the sewer fund, trash and recycling fund, and then the Black Canyon Golf Course, which is a quasi-enterprise fund. It's not enterprise per Tabor, but about half of their revenues come from user charges. So we count it as a, um, enterprise fund. The water fund is budgeted at 9.3 million, almost 9.4 million. And the capital projects that we intend to do next year are listed there. Uh, one that we started on this year and is carrying over to 2022 is that Burt Street Line replacement, as well as the Townsend Water Line replacements. This graph, uh, shows that blue line, that's, um, the reserves that we're anticipating at the end of 2022 at 3.7 million. Our policy is a 90 day of operations, which is 1.3 million. We are proposing a water rate increase for 2022. It's mainly due to a pass through from Project Seven on the usage fees. We're also going to increase the base fee by 5%. So residential customer will see about a dollar 35 more on their monthly bill for water using 1,000 gallons. So if you use 2,000 gallons or 3,000 gallons or your average is higher than that, you just have to take that 44 cents and add it up. Sewer fund, budgeting 5.9 million dollars. That includes several capital projects. It seems like, um, every year we have more sewer fund activity. It's, um, the big one here is the new vector truck. This is in addition to our other one and is needed for lots of different reasons in the city, but mainly for sewer, um, line to look and see where we might have intruding, um, roots or that type of thing that are messing up, um, that, that, that program. The wastewater treatment plant, we've got 35,000 in the budget for perimeter fencing. Sewer fund again here to that blue line, which is, um, projected reserves versus the 90 day reserve. It's getting, um, very close. They're right on top of one another. We're also proposing a 5% increase to the sewer rates for 2022, which brings the residential customer, um, bill will, will increase a dollar 12 per month. Trash and recycling fund at 2.3 million almost. We are going to purchase a new addition, um, truck. And that's a lead time of, um, gosh, 12 to 18 months. So we've got it budgeted in 2022, but when title changes is actually when we'll spend the money. So this might be a carryover to 23, um, just hard to tell. And then there's a new employee in the trash and recycling fund that needs a pickup to deliver trash containers, that type of thing. Uh, trash and recycling fund, that, that blue line, that blue and gray line are always a little closer than we'd like, but not terrible. Um, the reserves though, we're estimating go below our 90 day reserve in 2022. And that's even with a 10% rate increase that we're proposing, um, which will increase trash rates per month, a dollar 51 for a residential customer. Here's a trash and recycling graph that shows, uh, the 10% for 2022 of an increase to revenue. 23, 4, 5 and 6, that's only a 5% increase. So that was a discussion we had during the 2021 budget. Um, we knew we were getting in a little bit of trouble with the trash and recycling fund, so we wanted to start beefing it up. So we proposed 5% when we got the, um, quote for the new truck. And then there's other costs like landfill fees that are going up per inflation. That kind of forced us to propose a 10% increase to the trash and recycling fund to keep it going in the right direction. The Black Canyon Golf Course is budgeted at 1.5 million almost. Uh, we did open the Rusty Putter Restaurant, so that is where you're seeing the increases to fund a restaurant. Capital projects for next year is a driving range fence and then a, a safety lift for This graph just shows you the general fund transfer versus the golf revenues. And they're about, um, you know, actually we're proposing that the golf revenues will be more than the general fund transfer in 2022. So that's a, a first, um, unless our projections come in for 2021 as we intended. Internal service funds in the city, we've got four of those. They're, um, considered enterprise funds because they operate off of user charges, but they're internal. So it's our departments and our different, um, funds that contribute to these, um, revenues. With that, um, our last, to complete the circle is debt service, agency and permanent funds. And we basically have one of each of those in the 2022 budget. The debt service fund, like we talked about, is, is, um, transfers from the general fund and the public safety fund to pay those annual principal and interest payments. The permanent fund, by ordinance, we transfer back any interest that's earned in the, in the cemetery perpetual fund. And then the agency fund is a new fund for 2022. Um, and it is to collect and pay out the Montrose Recreation District taxes that we collect. With that, you have ordinance 8567, 2567 in front of you for first.
We do have a question. If you can just clarify for those that might be listening later on.
Sure.
We talk about the enterprise funds outside the golf course. Um, the reason why the general fund can't pay for those funds, can you just talk to that a little bit?
Um, well, for, per Tabor, if the general fund contributes funding to these enterprise funds, they then lose that, um, enterprise fund status under Tabor, um, and would require a vote for fee increases, a vote for, um, different activities.
I used to not be on city water. I was outside that. I was in the city of Montrose, but not served by city of Montrose water. And so if the city of Montrose, um, used its general fund to support its water users, then I, as a, I would be paying Tri-County increased water rates and my tax dollars would be coming out of the general fund to support Montrose water users. And that's always helped me kind of wrap my head around why enterprise funds can't take money from the general fund.
That's a very good point. And we have several, um, subdivisions in, in the city that are not served by water.
Thank you, Shani. I just wanted to clarify for those looking at the budget, if they question, why can't we just move money over?
You're welcome.
It'd be a good question, for sure.
Alright. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. In that case, I would uh open a hearing if there's anyone that would care to discuss that. Do we have nothing online? All right, in that case, we'll bring it back here and I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to pass ordinance twenty-five sixty-seven on first reading as presented.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, please vote. And that passes unanimously. The next item is item number eight, it's a resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-three. And this is to replace chapters three dash one, three dash two, and three dash three of the City Montrose Regulation Metal Manual and updating the fee schedule. City Clerk Lisa Lisa Del Peccalo.
Thank you, Mayor Glasgow. We reviewed the proposed fee schedule revisions uh at the work session on October eighteenth. And with the exception of one very minor typo, everything included in the meeting packet is the same, there have been no changes. These fee schedule revisions, if adopted, would take effect January first, and they do include the utility fee updates that Shaney mentioned during her budget presentation. I'm prepared to um review the items one by one if you would like.
All right, do you wanna go through this and then we've been through it before?
Uh we'd just like to comment that we did add the um Montrose Rotary Amphitheater as a new item on there, so that it is a line item on this fee schedule, so that people can actually refer to this document to find the fee schedule for that amphitheater usage.
That is correct.
Thanks, Dan. Any other questions? Do we have anyone online? No, nobody here? In that case, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-three as presented.
Do you have a second? All right, I have a motion, a second, please vote. And that passes unanimously. Ordinance twenty-five sixty-eight on first reading. This is uh Matthew Maglaro, would you care to explain this one to us, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh good evening, members of City Council and also members of the public via Zoom. Uh here on a proposal to repeal one discrete provision in the Montrose ordinances in Title Six, Chapter One, specifically six dash one dash twenty-six, which is the loitering provision. What is sought here is an outright repeal, there is no replacement uh language sought other than to indicate the numbering for the offenses reserved as open. Uh this was presented at as as a discussion item at a recorded work session held on October eighteenth of this year. A red line version appears on pages forty-five through forty-six of today's packet, clean version on pages forty-three through forty-four, and an elemental instruction draft for both the crimes that are contained within this particular ordinance is set out in pages forty-seven through forty-eight. To the extent I have comments I'm gonna track to to that. There are no changes between uh what is in the packet tonight and what was in the packet at the work session presentation, other than an ordinance number has been assigned to this now. For the record, the Montrose Municipal Court uh was provided a courtesy copy of the proposed repeal language. Executive summary, there are three rationale staff is advancing for the repeal of this ordinance. Uh first, the ordinance is not used in practice by the Montrose Police Department. As discussed in the work session, uh neither of the crimes, the two crimes contained within six dash one dash twenty-six have been cited to the Montrose Municipal Court in over a decade. The last time this was used uh was November twenty-first of twenty-ten, so coming up on the eleven year anniversary. The um subsection B, um the other crime as to the parent slash guardian has not been used at any point from January first, two thousand eight till now. Uh the court had no record of uh under its current electronic system of any initiation of prosecution for that particular offense. The legislative history, I went into the the work session a bit, um this came to us in the early nineties. Um there were concerns that led to the passage of this. Uh those concerns were, in summary, for the at least the pro camp, of vehicle racing, uh loud music from vehicles, juvenile alcohol consumption, and juvenile vandalism, uh as I think a fair summary of the uh the legislative record. Those are all covered by more provable statutes that are cited into the Montrose Municipal Court regularly and that we deal with on a regular basis, except um on Thursdays when this is a courtroom. Um for example, um our speed contests and exhibition of speed are covered by our traffic ordinances. Um there's a general prohibition on unreasonable noise, uh as to alcohol consumption, we have a prohibition on underage possession, purchase, or consumption of alcohol. Juvenile vandalism is covered by two different sections in a Montrose code. Um most particularly for destruction of property, it's also covered by a criminal mixture statute on the state level. Uh and ultimately, um there's a potential for officers in the field to make a referral to the Department of Health and Human Services to the extent they deem it necessary and in professional discretion. Last, um and thir- the ordinance suffers a likely constitutional infirmity. Um and should it be uh contested in prosecution, uh I believe there would be some constitutional uh issues presented with the prosecution of that case. Uh while the Colorado Supreme Court has upheld a loitering ordinance out of Pueblo, now it's discussed at the work session, that's um people in the matter of J M. Uh for the record, it's seven six eight, P two D two one nine, a Colorado Supreme Court case from nineteen eighty-nine. There were certain constitutional challenges made in that case, um one was interference with uh constitutional protected liberty interests, and the other was a argument that ultimately the litigant in that particular case didn't have standing to even bring. The problem that's presented with this ordinance um in the element shared by both crimes is from the definition of loitering itself. Uh remaining idle in essentially one location to be dalatory, to tarry, to dawdle, and shall include but not limited to standing around, hanging out, sitting, kneeling, sauntering, or prowling. That sort of language is very broad, um I would submit that it's subject to a challenge for a constitutional argument that was not considered by the Colorado Supreme Court in eighty-nine in that decision as void for vagueness. While the Colorado Supreme Court has drawn a distinction in general between juvenile court curfew statutes that just prohibit mere presence versus ones that simply prohibit, in the language of the court decision, simply prohibit undirected or aimless activity of minors during curfew hours, which which allow the minor to participate fully in employment, religious, civic, and social activities. The question raises whether or not this language, this particular language used that's shared by both definitions of the crime, give enough notice of what conduct in fact prohibits. And that um so I'd submit to you that there are some issues with um uh bringing cases forward. I think there are the charges that are um available to the police department to uh address the issues that underlie the legislative history uh and the reason this came to be in our code. Uh and I would submit that the council should repeal the statute. Uh other than that, I have uh nothing further, I'll take any questions.
One of the questions that I do have in this document, when we're dealing with a person knowingly means that he or she is aware of his or her conduct, should that language be changed over to person?
In the red line under B, is that what you're referring to? That term for knowingly has been replaced in part um by um a change to the code that we made last year actually to codify the Model Penal Code definition of knowingly into at six dash one dash six. This particular definition would be used with to define the um the crime against the parent um to further define that term, they'd be probably both definitions would be given logically by a court. A- again, there's difficulty, I think, in bringing a prosecution here because in addition to meeting the knowingly requirement under the, as we've defined it in our code, we'd also have to meet the definition beyond a reasonable doubt of the further definition of knowingly within B. And that would be difficult, I think, as a a lift for a prosecution to do. Yes, and that section is being repealed, that specific um additional definition for knowingly.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Uh hold a hearing, I'll open the hearing, do we have anyone online? Do we have one in the audience? And we have no one online, and I'll close the hearing, I'll bring it back here and consider a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we pass ordinance twenty-five sixty-eight on first reading as presented.
Second.
And I have a motion and a second, please vote. That passes unanimously. Ordin- ordinance twenty-five sixty-five on second reading, consal- Council Consideration of an Ordinance Twenty-five Sixty-Five, Senior Staff Planner, Amy Sharp.
Thanks. This one's for the McCracken addition, you guys have seen this several times, so I'm gonna breeze through it pretty fast, so that if you have questions at the end, um feel free to ask. So just as a reminder, this one is the one that's located up north of town, just across um the highway from the airport. Um it's about two point three acres in size. Um this one's surrounded by I two and some public, and the request is for B three general commercial district. Um this one is just shows the actual plat for the annexation, so you can see how that one looks. In our comprehensive plan, this is listed as an employment center, so it fits in nicely with the proposed use as well. It's in our growth area one and two, which just means that it's um in some area that has moderate proximity to existing infrastructure. And just in summary, this one does meet our annexation requirements. Um they did do an annexation agreement and they were, the Planning Commission recommended the initial zoning of B three on September twenty-second, and the staff is recommending approval of the annexation and the B three general commercial district. I'm open to any questions.
Anyone have a question? All right, in that case, I'll open a hearing. Oh wait a minute, I just have to have a public comment on this. Is there any public comment? All right, thank you. Let's see, I'll accept a motion.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that uh we adopt ordinance two-five-six-five on second reading as presented.
Well, second thought.
I have a motion, a second, please vote. And that passes unanimously. Item eleven on our agenda is ordinance twenty-five sixty-six. Amy Sharp.
I have nothing further to add on this one, it's the same thing.
This just goes along with the one we just approved, yes. Council, any questions? Not, I'll accept a motion on uh well, we'll hold a hearing on the, no, public comment, we got no public comment, all right. We'll get this right in a minute. Do I have a motion?
Uh Mr. Mayor, I I move that council adopt ordinance twenty-five sixty-six on second reading as presented.
I second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, please vote. That passes unanimously. Next item is ordinance twenty-five sixty-nine on first reading. Amy Sharp.
Right, there we go. So this one might look a little fa- familiar to you, this one is related to the um Stryker Land Exchange that Bill recently discussed with you during work session, and this is for the rezone portion of that. So this one is located um just up off of Air Parkway on the north end of town. Apparently I don't know how to forward my screen anymore. There it goes. Okay, so they requested rezone a portion of this parcel, so we discussed this um a little bit at work session, but we are going to be doing a minor subdivision, which is done administratively. Um we're in the process of that right now. And this rezone is to just rezone this northern portion from P Public District to the B three general commercial district. So we're gonna leave a small slither of property um that's gonna be subdivided, like I mentioned, it's down in the little corner there, it's kinda highlighted in black. That's going to be remaining as um P Public, cause it's the access to the river for the takeout. And the northern portion is going to be, um the request is to rezone that as B three general commercial district. So this is the actual zoning map, so it kinda shows you a little bit more up close in detail what that's going to look like. And this is going to actually match our minor subdivision map um as well, which is currently in process. So again, um this large portion um would be B three, and then the small area down here would remain P Public. Um this is just our rezone criteria, you guys have seen this many times, so I won't read through all of that. This is a photo of the area, so those that aren't familiar with it, you can kinda see what that looks like, you can kinda see the river um from this little portion over here, and that's the trail access, which is gonna remain P Public, and then um the portion kind of up in here is more gonna be the B three. This is listed as public in our future land use map, and then we did take this to Planning Commission already, and they did recommend approval on October twenty-seventh for the B three general commercial district. We do find that this is in general compliance with our comp plan and also the existing uses in the surrounding area. Um if you refer back to that zoning map, that was kind of at the beginning, you'll see that it's close to other industrial uses as well, um and this is going to be the B three. With that, I'll open it to any questions.
Any questions? We've had quite a bit of discussion on this, I I think it'd be good to point out that uh let's add a end of a cul-de-sac. There is access to the river uh right beside that, and there is parking both in the cul-de-sac and along the street feeding that, so we do have good access still uh to the river. Any other comments?
I have a question. We rezone the the different, there's some of it's remaining P Public and some of it's being rezoned, but it hasn't been subdivided yet? And we can rezone it differently even before it's subdivided?
Correct, so we usually like to do the subdivision portion per first, just because it looks cleaner, but you can have one parcel zoned two different ways, we do have other examples of that in the city as well, um where we have one parcel that has two different zoning districts. Um but we tend to want to do it the other way, but it just so happened that we were not able to get the minor subdivision done prior to the rezoning in order for all the pieces to come together at the same time, the way we needed it to for the greater picture of the land exchange. So it will be for a short time, this one parcel will be zoned as two different things, B three and public.
Okay.
But that minor subdivision will probably be done in a matter of a few weeks.
And a minor subdivision is done administratively by staff versus a rezone had to go to Planning Commission and then approval by council, so it takes longer.
Correct.
Okay.
And if I can just add, we've had requests before for the split zoning on parcels. It's not something that we normally would do long term, so this one, because of the short term nature, it's just an interim measure until we finish the administrative subdivision. That's why it's it's going against our normal practice, but it is allowable as mentioned, but it isn't something that we would across the entire community recommend long term, leaving things like that because it creates conflict.
So in general, we don't have a parcel zoned two different ways, but we know this is about to be through the minor subdivision process, split into two different parcels.
Correct.
And that isn't contingent on approval from Planning Commission or council, that's just being done um administratively.
Correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Uh open a public hearing, uh do we have anyone online? No one, in that case, we'll close the hearing, and I would accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to pass ordinance twenty-five sixty-nine on first reading as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, please vote. And that passes unanimously. Intergovernmental Agreement Between the City and County, Amy Sharp.
So we do talked about this at work session as well, this is basically just an update to our IGA with the county. This is something that is typically done anytime you do an update to your comprehensive plan, and just talks about the continued agreement that we have with the city and the county as it pertains to land development issues. Um you'll have a red line version and a clean version in your packet, and we talked through some of those details um at the last work session, and so I won't go through all those in detail again, but I'm open to any questions that you might have.
And I think we've covered it pretty much in depth, uh council have any questions?
Oh, I wanted to make notes, sorry, one more thing, had in my notes, that I did talk to the county and they plan to bring this before their um board as well sometime this month, so we'll have it wrapped up and signed on both sides by the end of the year.
All right, thank you. If there are no questions, I'd accept public comment. We have none. In that case, I will take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve uh the twenty twenty-one intergovernmental agreement between the city and county of Montrose, Colorado as presented.
I have a motion and a second, please vote. That passes unanimously. Item fourteen, Staff Reports. Bill, do you have anything? Steven, do you have anything? Uh Ann?
I do not, but I'll just note, because you might not see, that Chief Hall is on Zoom, and so it looks like he does have an update.
Gunnison, do you have any uh information on the student council?
Uh, yes, I can go ahead and give a report on, uh, what we're doing with, uh, Montrose Youth Council so far this year. Uh, so just a few weeks ago, we, uh, kicked off another, uh, so far, a great and successful term. Uh, we're going to be working on a few different projects this year, uh, focusing on setting aside several months for each one and giving ourselves plenty of, of time to prepare and, uh, spread awareness for the projects we want to do. Uh, we've come up with a Rock the Rec event, uh, for this December. Uh, we've come up with a theme for that in our, uh, previous, uh, meeting and, uh, also assigned committees for the different parts of that. Uh, so, so far, it's been a great year, and, um, everything is heading in the right direction. And, uh, it's, uh, great to be with all of you tonight representing Youth Council again.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Matt, do you have anything?
Nothing further for me. Thank you.
Nothing for me.
Chief Hall, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Hey, Mr. Mayor and Council, um, thanks for having me this evening. So one of the things that I wanted to update City Council on was the, um, uh, intention to bring options to City Council in November uh, for the adult gaming arcade establishments. And, um, it, uh, so tonight, my briefing is just to update you on how that's going. Uh, one of the things that we are continuing to try to research and determine is whether or not these establishments and how they're operated actually meet or actually don't meet the Colorado gaming statutes. And so that's taking some time, in fact, more time than we initially thought. Um, some of the things that we, uh, will be doing here in November is reaching out to our district attorney to determine, um, his level of, uh, involvement, uh, in any potential future prosecutions. Um, if, uh, these establishments are, are deemed to, uh, not be legal in nature. And then also, uh, because of, uh, the recent moratorium, this has started a little bit of a, I guess, a thing across the western slope. Um, Grand Junction's Public Safety Attorney has reached out. I do believe that also, uh, the City of Delta is, is reaching out. And it started a conversation at the Colorado AG's office, Attorney General's office. And so it's something that, uh, we want to ping the Attorney General's office on as well to get their opinion on how these things are operated and whether they meet the current gaming statutes or not. So all in all, we just want to make sure that we, uh, staff gives our council a really good, as clear as we can, picture, um, about options. But it's, um, obviously taking us some more time. And so I wanted to update council, this is not something that we'll bring, be bringing forward to council in the, in November, uh, because of some of the, uh, additional research that we need to conduct and some of the meetings that we need to have with some, some of our stakeholders. And happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Good. How are we doing on, uh, our police academy for next year? Are we moving on, on getting that set up?
Yeah, we are. Um, that's a great question. So all three of the, uh, mini-skill portions of the academies, that's firearms, driving, and rest control, have all been approved by the post board, including the sites where we're teaching, uh, those things. And, uh, out of, uh, fifty-six lesson plans, I think we're only nine left, uh, that need to be approved. And all of those, I think, are fairly minor changes, just some things like maybe moving a line from one side of the page to the other. And so, uh, once, uh, this is complete, and our goal is to have it done, uh, probably by, I'd say, the first week of December, uh, we will be meeting with C M U and, uh, we'll be beginning the advertising portion for the summer academy next year. So it's pretty exciting.
And I believe you have a recruiting program coming up locally here shortly.
We do. Yep, we absolutely do. So on November twentieth, uh, which is a Saturday from ten A M. to four P M. Um, at the Montrose County Event Center, uh, we'll have a couple of our cars. We'll have our drone out there. We'll have a mix of our police officers and command staff. And, uh, for the last, essentially about week, week and a half, we've had officers that have been blanketing other communities with, uh, some of our recruiting brochures. Uh, we've had, uh, several, uh, sent officers across the state, uh, to recruit law enforcement recruiting fairs. Uh, we've also partnered with, um, some of our local colleges, to include C M U, uh, to start identifying students, um, in criminal justice programs that are looking at graduating and potentially students who might be local to our region that may want to come and be a, a Montrose police officer. So, um, we're hoping to have a good turnout, uh, on November twentieth. We'll see how it goes. But this will be the first of several, um, locally-directed efforts to identify individuals in our community that I think would make great, um, police officers for our department. And, uh, I think, uh, that's definitely something that we need to focus on heavily.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. In that case, I'll, uh, bring it back here to the City Council for comments.
I have one more thing I forgot to mention, if you don't mind. Um, council actually had brought this up too, but I wanted to announce that we have a, um, public meeting next week on Tuesday, um, November ninth, I believe that is. And we're going to be discussing our redo district, which is our redevelopment overlay district and accessory dwelling units, um, which is just an opportunity for people to come and learn more about what that district is. And then possibilities for possi-, um, expanding that within other parts of the city. So this would be for things where people have a primary home, and then they might want to add, like, a mother-in-law suite in their backyard or different things like that, just as a way to increase housing opportunities in Montrose. So that will be, um, next week on November ninth. It'll be from five-thirty to seven-thirty, at the Montrose Pavilion. And today, we actually did decide to add a virtual meeting option for that. So we will be publishing that on social media as well and getting the word out to people that, um, they can participate in person or virtually for that meeting.
And I think, uh, one of the things too is that redo areas trying to allow more build and more people to live closer to the downtown area. Is that correct?
It is. That's kind of the goal right now, um, but we've heard possibilities of, um, expanding that to places even further out from just the downtown. So we want to get public feedback on whether that's something our community wants to see or not.
So if I, um, if I currently lived in the redo district and I was curious about what all it would entail to build something in my backyard that I could run out, um, this would answer those questions.
Exactly.
Great.
Amy, thanks for the update. I might just note too, um, this was part of our comprehensive plan. So it's part of the beginning of the implementation of our comprehensive plan. And we also know that many of you on council have been, um, talking about this for a long time and talking with community members for a long time, um, about the interest to expand or enhance the redo district. We did a tour of the community. It feels like a long time ago I was here, so it was less than three years ago. Um, and this is something that you identified. So thank you for working with us on it, and we're excited to, um, be bringing this goal of yours and the communities, um, to this meeting. And then any changes would be legislative, and you would review those through an ordinance.
I love that we're doing a open house or a meeting about this, but if someone isn't able to make it or watch virtually, and they want to know if they live in the redo district or what the rules are, they can call our Planning Services Department, right?
Yeah, I was just going to add that same thing. Yeah, if they couldn't make it, I can definitely share the presentation with them afterwards, and I can still take public comments by email or phone call. Um, they can just contact me.
Great.
Anyone else? Any comments by council?
Yes, we have talked a lot about childcare, and we helped fund the comprehensive childcare survey that was recently completed. And, um, if folks want to hear more about childcare in our community, um, Chrissy Simmons with Bright Beginnings is going to be presenting tomorrow morning at the Community Forum from eight to nine at C M U about childcare in our community and where we have it, where we don't have it, how those needs are being met or not being met in our community. I think that's a really important issue.
Just wanted to give a shout out to our Dartboard and their partners for a very successful, uh, trick-or-treat street and Halloween on Main Street, and all the activities and the fun that happened down there. And, uh, the community had a really good time, and it was one of those real fun community events. And I just wanted to give them all kudos. David Reed. Anthony?
I just want to say thank you to Shaney for all the hard work he did on that budget presentation and then the work you've been doing over the last, well, year to get that done. I know it's a lot of work. I know you put a lot of effort into it, so thank you for all the time and, and, and effort that went into that.
You're welcome.
You know, she gets a percentage.
Don't start rumors.
That was a joke, for the record.
No, that's not true. Any other, any other comments? If not, I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a motion to adjourn. We are done for the evening. Thank you.